I'd like to call this meeting to order for the Blackhawk County Board of Supervisors for March 2nd, 2023. Roll call, please, Mr. Veder.
All, here.
Little.
Here.
Schwartz.
Here.
Chalka.
Here.
Layland.
Here. Would everyone please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for Item one, is the agenda received as proposed or as amended?
So moved?
Seconded.
Moved and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign, the agenda is received.
Item two, moving on to the budget work session, discussion and possible board action, consideration of all aspects of the fiscal year '24 Blackhawk County budget. Are you ready, Michelle? I was gonna say that.
Ready, I didn't, I didn't prepare anything today, so I will put up whatever you're interested in looking at, if I can find it.
Well, I had a couple of things, just comments, I was gonna say that I wanted to ask about, and I thought they really weren't capital investments, they were just kinda some of the things that we have discussed, and.
Linda, if I could, really quick?
Yeah.
You know, I said at Tuesday's meeting, that, frankly, I was one who apologized. You know, I said in the meeting that if it later came out that folks were gone for reason, that I would do so and acknowledge that. I did speak with Supervisor Chalka, called me yesterday morning, and, you know, he expressed that he was at a training, which we knew, but that he had gotten called and was immediately unavailable. And I know that we tried calling and texting and tried to communicate. Dan, we've worked together for, I can remember going to your office across the street when you wore a different hat. We've, I think we've had a good working relationship, we might sometimes disagree, but that disagreement's never been disrespect, and I apologize if some of the words were unintentional to impugn, frankly, your character, your willingness to step up and be responsible. So, I apologize for that, you know, it did put us all in a tough spot. And Dan and I talked about it the other day, it put us in a tough spot of not knowing what was going on without the communication, and so, you know, I hope that all of us, moving forward, if we do have to dip off of a call, or have to leave a meeting, you know, if we're expecting a delay in action, if we can just communicate that, it helps, but, yeah, I just wanted to look you in the eye publicly, say it, I said in that meeting, and I would say I was sorry, and I expressed it privately, but I wanted to do it here as well, so.
I appreciate it, it wasn't necessary.
And as I indicated in my text to you earlier, we lost internet, and that's the reason why I went off, I think it was about 11:10, and when I got onto the Sessors Budget Meeting, the internet went out again, so that was the reason. Over the years, it's, has been the process of the Board of Supervisors out of respect and courtesy, that if we're discussing important issues, especially around budget time, and for some reason, two supervisors has to leave. We had a long day Tuesday, usually we would delay any action until the full board come back. Now, granted, we have to continue on doing business as a board, because you usually have people missing, but, again, in the past, that's what we've done, is just simply adjourned the meeting and moved on the next time, we could've caught up on Tuesday. With that said, any action that was taken that day after the two of us were off, I'd appreciate if we could revisit them, and possibly there'll be another, I'll call for another vote.
Sure, yeah, I think that's probably fair, and we're happy to do that probably too, but we can discuss that. I don't know if you have any comments to make, Dan, or, I just thought it's been, it's been quite a year already in this last eight weeks, I thought we've had some issues with some of our own elected officials, and kind of inappropriately, I guess, calling us out with inaccurate statements. We've had the issue with the county levy, with our other local officials, and made the eight weeks a little difficult too, and also made the budget kinda drawn out, our budget process, but I just thought, yeah, some respect for one another and working together is really what I think all of us wanna be about, and doing the best, obviously, for the taxpayers, so I'm hopeful we'll accomplish some good things today, and then going forward too, we just get better as a board in working together and respecting one another, so. Any comments from anyone else, or we go on to my mental health advocate call-out on that? And this was just really a question I had on the mental health advocate position, as we were looking at staffing requests and that type of thing, and I know, Michelle, with you being new, you were meeting with Jackie to get to know her position better, and I think because you do the timesheets, but I'm just thinking because that position is accountable to this board, and when we were assigned kind of, or mandated that responsibility, there hasn't been, I guess, a lot of communication with her, or however that position works, so I would think at least on a quarterly basis, if not something more, if we could have her come and update the board on what's going on, and that would certainly help us and maybe you as well, but, I don't know.
Yeah, I would appreciate that.
I will get ahold of Jackie and we'll work something out.
Great, thank you. One question I had, and maybe it was gonna come up later, but because today's probably gonna just be finalizing, I think, capital requests and staffing requests, it was regarding the dispatch costs that were increased for the rural areas, and I know you were doing everything you could to kind of make some adjustments, and I wondered if you'd explain to us a little bit more about, just a little bit, what that requires, or what you did for that, to kind of bring that down, make it a little more acceptable to the, yeah, I was gonna say, since it was kind of a shock to them and all of us, how that kind of rolled out, and then if that's something we continue in the future, or if we stay with property tax values, do we then look at maybe, you know, going to the real number next year or whatever, so.
And also, Michelle, I'm just, on that note, I know other funds come from, I believe, the E9111 Service Board, any idea how much to, I mean, are you aware of those figures? I mean, I should ask this before the meeting, so you're prepared, but.
No, it's all right, I have reached out to them to get the numbers, and unfortunately, they did have a hearing yesterday that I meant to attend and forgot to do that, so I have not gotten their official numbers yet. What is in our software system for fiscal '23, if I remember correctly, the revenues, at least three quarters of a million, I think, but there was a quarter million that says it was a state grant or something, that I don't know if that continues, so I have questions about that budget that we need to explore.
Because the one thing, and we're to a nice point in the budget, and the one thing I always like to, I wanna provide services, and I like where a board is going, I mean, between the personalities and even the different ideologies we all have, collectively, and five's a great number, three would be too few, seven would be too many, so five of us getting together, and this is a huge budget, there are so many moving parts, I've been involved in public budgets for 20 years, and it still confuses me. But the one thing I looked at, I like to look at, is sustainability, not just for our terms, but who's ever sitting in his seat in 10 years, I want to, I wanna make sure that we're not saddling them with obligations that they can't sustain, and when I look at this budget, I see several programs, several projects that I'm, we're on a great budget, but quite honestly, I'm concerned about sustainability, and one is consolidated dispatch.
Dan, yesterday I partook in the 911 budget, because I'm a voting member, I don't have the numbers in front of me, but I can certainly get a copy of the budget, or Michelle can. I do know revenues are down a little bit.
Yes, yes.
So, I think it's best, if Michelle can't get it, I'll get a copy and get it sent to the board members, so they all can review it, but it was adopted yesterday at the meeting.
Thank you.
And I did wanna bring up, before we go too far, in other topics, I'm not sure how long Caitlin can stay with us today, she had emailed us asking us if we could talk.
Oh, she did, and we communicated last night, too, so she'd said too, she'd be happy to respond at a call if she had to go off, if we'd respond with an email or text to her, that she'd get back on, so, I see her up there today, I was gonna acknowledge that again to her. No, well, and that brings up a point, I was gonna say, the difficulty, is there a reason that anybody knows, is it difficult to get that financial information from those individuals or from that group?
No, you can get it.
It should, well, I just meant from Michelle, I know it's not, maybe it shouldn't be for you, Tom, as a voting member, but I just thought too, there's, that's really an area that our financial directors should be able to request and get to, is it not?
Sure she can.
Okay, I just, yeah, I think there's been some, it's been a little slow.
That's what's interesting, I mean, I've been involved in so many budgets, it's amazing what I've forgotten, because it's that complicated.
It is.
There's many, many moving parts.
Oh, for sure.
All right, well, more to come then on E9111, I will get that document from someone, whether it's Tom or someone else, and we'll, we'll look at that more.
Okay, well, maybe if you, even if you requested an email and copied the board or something, I don't know if that helps, but it alerts them, too, we are all interested in getting it, so, thank you.
So, to circle back to Linda's question about the rural levy, had a couple of things happen this year, the biggest thing that I did to help reduce that dispatch cost, which I think about doubled, and I don't have that number right at my fingertips right now, if you remember, we talked early on that our debt service levy was, our debt payments were declining this year, and historically, the county has deposited, the portion of their local option tax proceeds that can be spent on roads have been deposited directly to the debt service levy to repay debt that we issued to build roads with. Well, because we're, that debt is being paid off, we're able to instead use that local option tax directly to build roads, and that amount was more than what we have typically been having to pay on the debt, so, a couple things happened, first of all, then, when we got our revised valuations from the state, that reduced the amount that we can levy, both from the general fund for roads and also from the rural levy for roads, those both, we typically do a transfer from those respective funds over secondary roads that they use for construction, and that was, both had to come down a little bit, so I was, I've been thinking in my head, how do we get, how do we replace that money in secondary roads, and I, and how do we help the rural levy? So, realizing that the local option tax that we would, that we plan to transfer in 2024 is more than what they're projecting they need in costs in 2024, I, I think that we won't hurt the secondary roads budget at all by reducing the rural levy transfer, from the rural levy to secondary roads, we're gonna reduce it by 5%, down to 95% of the maximum, and I believe 2023 is the first year you'd put it up to the maximum, so we just, we're just kind of using different dollars to fund road construction, and that is allowing us to reduce the rural levy for the rural levy taxpayers.
And you and Kathy.
Michelle, Michelle, I had some people call on that, and they were kinda confused, the 50% of that was to go towards tax relief, that still remains the same?
Yes, 50% of the local option is deposited directly to the rural levy fund.
Okay.
And reduces that tax levy, and that's always been that way, and I didn't, didn't touch that 50%, it's the other 50% that's used for roads that we're gonna change the use of, and really, we're not even changing the use, we're actually, in a way, gonna use it.
More immediate, to me.
More effectively, is the word I think I'll use, because we won't have to pay interest on that now, if we can use the cash we get in directly for road construction and not pay interest, that is a good thing for our taxpayers, as long as the receipts are enough to pay for the construction, and they are in the near term, that could always change sometime.
Yeah, the intent at the time was, obviously, the roads weren't being fixed, I think we were spending something like, it was a very minimum amount a year, so the intent was to put some money towards the roads, so we held a referendum, it was a little small turnout, but anyway, obviously, we couldn't fund roads directly with that local option sales tax, because there wasn't enough there, and that's why the board decided to bond at that time, and it was in the favor of the county, because the interest rate was starting to drop pretty low, so, that's the only reason we used that money towards bonding, because obviously we had to start the project, so I think either or, whatever way we do it is gonna work, as long as it goes towards roads.
Yep, and I, I think that was a wise course of action, back when you did it, I'm not disagreeing with that, I, it's just that we're at a crossroads right now, that if we think we can sustain maintaining the roads without issuing another round of debt, then we can do it in a different manner.
Sure, sure, I think it's a great idea.
And we're also jeopardized a little bit by possible legislation that wants to alter or change our lost revenue, period.
Yes, we're not sure how that will work out yet, or what will happen with it, but that is another concern in the longer term.
Okay, any other questions on that, or anything, I guess, I was thinking where we kinda left off in the meeting was, you had brought up the point of the 60-40, and kinda wanted to touch on that, or ask about that, I don't know if that's something you wanna throw up on the screen?
Michelle, I just wanted to think of some of this other before we. Okay, can I screen share? It says the host has disabled screen share.
The host won't let you.
So you have to do this blind.
Yeah, screen share, thank you. She's listening so intently to us, she probably.
There we go.
They're good, she said.
It wasn't liking me for a minute there.
Well, it was captivating conversation, so.
Exactly. Screen sharing, where did it go? There we go, all right, so we did discuss this, okay, why are you not seeing what I'm seeing? Yeah, I have 60-40 on my screen, you are looking at, it's looking at the wrong screen, I suspect, I don't know how I managed that to have.
Yeah.
I tried to get this.
Yours does need to be the same as ours, ours needs to be the same as yours, that's true.
I know, so I do get it over here. Does share? Yep, good, yep. Okay. Well, I thought it was this, which is. Okay, okay, it's just finicky, here we are, let's try this again, this is the budget that I gave you Tuesday for the 60-40 fund, we were planning for total revenue of $400,000, and 60% of that, obviously, is the 240, and that's what we have used for security at the courthouse, and one IT person who works security, and then a deputy, basically, and there's, a second deputy was added that is being funded by the Attorney's Fine Collection Fund. So, the total expenses, just to fund those three things, is budgeted at $330,000, but we anticipate only collecting 240, so that, we'll run that in the negative, and that, that happened to a small degree in 2021, larger in 2022, and I suspect will be about this much again in 2023, so, I also put on this worksheet the bottom, the fund balance at June of '22, the amount that I'm assuming for now, that we'll use a fund balance, so we will pretty much wipe out that fund by the end of 2024, assuming that our revenue collections come in consistent with budget, which is approximately what we are receiving in 2023. So, that is an issue for future with the 60-40 fund that I wanted to make you all aware of, and I, I don't know if you wanna talk, the 40% side of that is okay, that share of revenue is about $160,000, Sheriff's Office has several things that we have agreed to fund out of there, some software, they have a social worker with, through pathways, that's funded out of there, and then some maintenance expenses for the shooting range, and Rory and I also spoke with Sheriff Thompson, I'm suggesting we fund the walkthrough metal detector replacement for the courthouse out of there this year, but not, not the x-ray machine, just to keep that fund on a solid footing.
Now, I believe, the one thing we look at under the 60-40 fund is IT salaries, and I believe Al has established a dialogue with IT at the Sheriff's Office to potentially make improvements and hopefully create efficiencies.
Correct, I believe that salary is for Mr. Snook, or Brian Snook, I'm not sure what that kinda looks like just yet, down the road, but, yeah.
But that, those communications have began.
Absolutely.
And was that a position that was also transferred, or went to administrative, and then has been reversed back, or is there?
Well, we haven't done the formal action to correct it back, there was, I can't find anything in the budget materials for 2023 that authorized moving it out of the 60-40 fund, but somehow paperwork was done in August to move that position back to the general basic fund, so, I can't tell for sure where it's budgeted, they have, they've been running enough vacancies, we're not necessarily running in the negative in the Sheriff's Department, but I, I don't know whether that'll continue for the next four months, so.
The reasoning what the board was given at the time, the individual worked in IT on our side, the individual wanted to leave, and the Sheriff's Office said they would take the individual, create an IT position, and pay it out of their fund, that's the reason why it was created and started.
Yeah.
So, if it went back into the operating budget, I don't think the board was made aware of that last year or whenever.
No, so that's why I'm thinking.
We've all been kinda confused about that, I haven't taken formal action to make a change for that at this time, but.
But I would think that would be something we'd reverse, just until the board decides.
Right, I would, yes, no, I agree, it needs to come to you, and we just haven't crossed that bridge yet.
Okay.
And I also think that the machine, the security machines have always come out of that 60-40 fund, and I think it should stay there, because it's courthouse security, the last two, the last two expenditures is the two deputies that are roaming the courthouse, one of them has paid through that, I think we need to be looking at those positions rather than taking on paying for the x-ray machine in the monthly contract, because that's always been in that 60-40, just recently, in the last two or three years, we added the deputies. Which I thought was kind of a waste of have two trained academy deputies in the courthouse, when they could be out on the street or doing something different.
Well, it sounds like it could be a discussion topic for in the future, I guess, but.
It is, same thing, same thing with Pine, Chris, that's a waste of money for that individual out there.
Sure.
I know that, I mean, part of why we had, had to add the deputies to the courthouse was that change in state law that said that if we were going to continue to bar people from bringing guns into the courthouse, we had to have, you know, armed guards patrolling, so I just wanna remind people that that's, that's why, that's why that decision was made, and it's a, it's just, you know, that's the state legislature that we're dealing with.
You would think it'd be safer if we barred guns from coming in, that we wouldn't need deputies compared to what it was before we barred the guns.
Right.
That doesn't make sense to me, but, again, it's screwy, but it's a lot of money.
Yeah, I agree.
And we went for 30, 40, 50 years without it, they got panic buttons, I think I hit mine in my office one time, they were there in minutes, so, it's not like we don't have security.
Well, I do appreciate one constant armed deputy in the courthouse, and, because I dealt with a citizen just a couple days ago, that's well-known to law enforcement, and I can hold my own for about four or five minutes, but kept going through my mind, it's okay, I just gotta hold my own for four or five minutes until that deputy gets here.
Okay.
So, I like having one, I agree, I sometimes question if two are necessary, I know many times, we actually end up with one and a half, I think, but I certainly believe it's something, because I can say sustainability, 10 years from now, I'm afraid we're.
Yeah, I see, Dan, over the years, I've seen within minutes of something started in that courthouse, within minutes, that courthouse is flooded with deputies, that's a response that we get from across the street.
And we have Waterloo Police right across the street.
Yeah.
And they come too.
Yeah, it's been good, well, and I know the 60-40 fund's been on all of our radar a little more this year than probably in previous years, but it certainly has been, and I think now that it continues there, it's like, it's good that, I think we're all aware, we're doing, being more diligent, and Michelle's keeping an eye on it for us too, so as we work through it, it'd be great, but you're, I think as we left it, then last week, or maybe it was Tuesday, that it was, we have funding in it for now, adequate funding to run through another budget cycle, it's just that we have that decision that's gonna be coming up, if we don't, something sooner, it'll be definitely by next year's budget.
It appears to me that by 2025, unless something dramatically changes, we will need to take some action.
And that'll give us too, another year to kind of look at, I guess, that fund and see what's coming out of it, or what needs to, or what needs to be put in it.
Yep.
All right, thank you.
This year, we should definitely make sure we explore like, the possible changes in the IT configuration, as well as, I know Sheriff Thompson had brought up something about, you know, potentially having some savings by going with just deputies and not permar, so it's, so let's make sure we explore those things this year.
Yeah, yeah, I'd like more information on that, I know, I had asked a previous financial director about that scenario, and I says, is there actually a savings there, and he says, yeah, savings can be found, I just wanna understand.
And you can find it.
I understand that too.
Because I don't think there was a savings earlier, it was like, when we added those deputies, there was a significant increase previously, it was like, but if there's savings to look at, yeah.
Yeah.
And security is kind of paramount, too.
You know, and as crazy as it sounds, but I feel like this is my job as an elected official, if I can find as, if I, if we can get as, as good of service for a better cost, I wanna talk about it.
Yeah, thank you. So, are there other particular questions, or anything, anybody wants to?
I just brought it up Tuesday, just to sort of have the discussion, because that number is dwindling pretty quick.
Great, okay, well, I guess I'd like to go through capital and kinda get that off our list, and see if there's any questions or concerns, whether it's individual projects, or whether it's departments, or if everybody's okay with that, so if you'd pull that up.
Yep.
Okay, there's our overall totals.
There's a summary, yes, I mean, you can tell me which department you wanna look at, and I'll flip to that page.
Well, I was gonna, like I said, I don't need to be the one that runs out in front of this for everything, if you've got, okay, but I did want Al to speak a little bit to the IT vehicle.
Sure.
If you wouldn't mind.
Al, you IT director?
Yes.
Yeah, we, we wanted to include a vehicle for request, for, I think it's the first time ever, and we do travel to different buildings, not, not just restricted to public health, but we also have conservation, Hartman Reserve, and figured it'd be a, you know, just as our department alone, I don't think we can justify the purchase of that, but the idea was to split this vehicle amongst three smaller departments, and then that way everyone can benefit, so we wanted to split it with HR and Board of Supervisors, so that you guys could take the vehicle, if in case you need to go to a conference or just a small meeting locally, and, and for us, it's mainly for hauling things too, of course, if there's large items, we can borrow from Rory's department, but we wanted something similar, probably like a small SUV, something fielded, so that we can safely transport computers, things like that, and I understand that we are insured. And I understand that we, we are insured, but I, I don't like transporting official computer equipment in personal vehicles, even though we're insured. I just, I would rather have an official vehicle and make me feel a bit better for things like that, so.
Well, and I understand completely from the obviously not using your own vehicles sometimes, especially when you're hauling and doing some of those things. I, I was just thinking personally, I don't know that the board, I, and I appreciate very much your willingness to share that with others and, and have that too. I don't know how many of us will take advantage of that, cause it's just so easy to get in our own vehicles and do what we need to do or go what we have to do. Not have that responsibility. I don't know how much HR would, and I'm not asking HR to speak to that, but I just thought the offer is out there and I imagine you would offer that to anyone probably if the vehicle wasn't being used and there was some department that was willing to do it. My questions were more to, um, how often it would be used? You know, how many, how often are you doing that now? Or could that be a benefit? Are you taking equipment different places every day, once a week? Are you utilizing it for just to transfer yourselves, going to Pinecrest or Conservation once a week, twice a week? I'm just thinking of the vehicle not being used and having it purchased, you know, and.
Sure, no, I, I totally understand that. You know, for our department, just our department alone, it would probably, it wouldn't be every day. It would be multiple times a week, I would say. But, and that, and that's why I wanted to include other departments, just to be totally transparent about it, to make sure that we can justify this vehicle. But I, you know, so it really depends on the week. Sometimes we have a lot of things to transport, sometimes we don't. Like for example, Clint's going to public health this afternoon, so he would take that vehicle for, for that purpose and he is actually transporting.
Al, I know you mentioned, you know, the preference would be a, a small SUV, right?
Or a van or something.
Or a van.
Yeah.
Hey, Mark. I know that you, you all are looking at decommissioning a couple of vehicles. You don't get much for the resale on them anyways. Could this be a place where we, where we look at fulfilling the need without necessarily taking on the expense?
Yeah. So we're currently in the process of decommissioning, um, five vehicles that were budgeted for FY twenty-three. Those vehicles are just arriving now. We'll be doing that in the next few weeks to a month. With respect to the SUV, two of those vehicles were traded in, they were chargers. I won't recommend.
No.
And supplanting those ones to a different department. They've been ridden and driven hard and they need to go. There is another SUV that's being traded out here shortly. I don't recommend that one either. It's hot, it's extremely high in mileage. We only have one that would potentially be something that we would recommend to a different department, but it would, that's a charger. It's got a hundred and thirty-five thousand miles on it. It's nickel and diming us a little bit. It's just not as bad as the other ones.
What is define nickel and dime?
What's that?
Define nickel and dime. I mean, it's always having to be something done, but is how.
It's, those are becoming more frequently as it gets up in miles. General service, oil changes, that type of thing, we don't define as nickel and dime. Sometimes an electronical component. Currently the engine lights on in that particular vehicle. I don't know what that is, but you know, it might be five hundred, might be a thousand dollars to fix whatever is going on with that particular one. The rest of them that are being cycled out.
So you can't.
Don't make our headache Al's headache.
Sure.
There's one, but it, I don't know it, that it suits exactly what Al is looking for. Would it get you around? It would get you around. Would it transport a few computer parts? Sure. Would it do a whole lot in the same means that a, than SUV would do?
Sure.
So local miles, you don't see that as being a good fix?
So with the, the last charger that we're cycling out, if it's staying local and it's, you know, from here to Cedar Falls and around the county, that particular vehicle probably won't be, I won't shy away from that. At the same time, the SUV that's going to be cycled out, it's a Ford Interceptor. Typically with the Fords, we have noticed much higher maintenance costs than we have with the other, either the Chevrolet or the Dodges. That vehicle isn't suitable for even, you know, it's still on patrol, but it needs to go. It's in bad shape. And that one's up around a hundred and forty-five, a hundred and fifty thousand miles. The two chargers that we already committed to cycling out and have just recently went back to the dealership, those were up in the one fifty, one sixty, uh, and those were even more frequent with the nickel and dime expenses.
Don't we have other departments rolling over vehicles?
What's that, Tom? Excuse me?
Don't we have other departments rolling over vehicles? The health department, the.
I wondered that too.
That we could get a car. Last time we got cars, two of them for the accessory, they had ninety thousand miles on them.
Yeah. Hopefully we don't do that anymore. We tried to correct that, so we kept an eye on those mileages a little bit better.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So like if you did use that charger?
Yeah.
And you used it as a Band-Aid for the next, you know, did, you know, I know that this is a tough fiscal year. If you did that, you won't want to have, won't look at that, the solution for the next four or five years.
Yeah, I guess I would be.
It would be really a Band-Aid.
My consideration for this is just to really measure the need for it without taking on the expense. So it would probably just be for one year to decide if we, if, if IT, you know, if, if there's enough mileage and usage to justify, ideally it's with a vehicle that is going to suit standard needs for IT, which is going to be something closer to the SUV so they can transport.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's what I was going to suggest too, is let's try one of these vehicles out, let's track how much it's used. Cause I know from a board, sort of like in the six years, I've used a car once and that was because we were going to Rochester to look at that nursing home. And so, um, but I go, I go to Charles City, I go to Cedar Rapids for watershed meetings and stuff, but I just drive my own car and I never expense the mileage. And so it's, um, I don't, I'm not comfortable voting for a car that's being presented as being partially for the board office, cause it looks like taxpayers, like we're giving the board supervisors a car to use. And so I, I don't like the optics of that. So I would think about reframing that when it's presented again. But I'd be, I'd be open to trying one of these other cars recycling out and track how much it's used.
And so the charger that I mentioned, that's, that's our oldest car on the plate. It's my car. It's a high mileage, uh, but it's been taken care of, uh, by cycling out. It's just reducing the emergency lighting, the computer, all those other things that do cause additional taxing on that vehicle that, um, you know, it'll get, we'll get you by for a year or so if you choose to do that.
Yeah, I appreciate your efforts too. And I said, and I appreciate Al's recommendation, trying to make it shareable by multiple departments. I just thought too, I wasn't sure how well that was going to work.
Linda, if I can kind of expound on kind of what you opened up with today as far as relationships and working together and that types of things, we want to be at the table with you guys. There's been a lot of expensive projects, um, some of those from within our office that have come up this year. Because some of those projects have been so expensive, um, the solutions aren't clearly defined. And when we're looking for expensive solutions, I know that it's become contentious over the times. I know that some of you have shouldered that, um, from within our office. Earlier, Dave issued extended apologies. That's really respectful and admirable. We want to do the same thing. From our office, we, as we work through these solutions and cooperativeness and communication, there's a lot of different personalities that are involved. I think that you said that, Dan. And some of us have been really passionate in, in those, uh, solutions. We want to extend our hand forward and number one, offering those apologies too. And there's been some turbulent water this year. We need to smooth that water out to sail the ship. And we're issue, you know, for me personally, let's work a little bit closer together on that stuff.
Thank you.
Okay.
Yep, thank you. Appreciate that. Now, that's supposed to be the strength of having five of us is the different personalities and solutions and philosophies that we bring together. So I'm, yeah, I'm looking forward to it.
Like five?
Uh huh, yep, five is a good.
I feel sometimes as a board, we're, how do I phrase this delicately? Others try to take advantage of us.
Yeah, that could be.
If one of us, if, if we're one alone, uh, we don't have the strength that five of us have together.
Yeah.
There's strength in the majority, strength in three. And that's what I find so interesting about this board right now, that three swings every which way. But, uh, for years, this has been a laissez-faire board, but we are now a board, we're no longer to be taken advantage of, taken advantage of. We do have a dialogue. We do talk amongst ourselves. We don't establish quorums in private. We have individual talks. We're transparent, but we are no longer going to be taken advantage of.
Thank you. So do we need to take an action? Or Tom, do you have some comments or anything on the vehicle too that you'd like to add?
I think that's a fair, um, I'm not so sure another vehicle is going to show up out of another department that has less miles. And I think that's the way to go for a year. Cars aren't cheap anymore. You can't get cars, you gotta pay above sticker price. So I think that's a fair deal of just kind of taking what we've got and see how it works for a year.
Evaluate it for the year. Okay, super. So do we need to vote on that or we can just, so you have our agreement? It sounds like unanimous on removing that from the.
Is that with respect to this, uh, this charger that I mentioned?
Yes.
Okay. So, yeah, um, that's good with us. I think that at the most, if on trade-in, when that was going to go here in a month or two, um, we may have gotten four thousand dollars out of it, may.
Okay. And that could be done yet this year, it sounds like, before we think.
So we need to have that done prior to July one.
Yes.
The dealership that won that bid knew that.
That was a trade-in.
Well, uh, but they didn't commit on the price on the trade-in, whether, how we liquidated, that's up to us.
Okay.
Us liquid, the dealership is not dependent on that with the trade. They'll be fine with it. Now, they would trade it if we wanted. We just know that we don't get.
Sure.
Much.
You're not going to get much.
They're not going to give much, yeah.
Yeah, Evan's just opened bids on theirs, Mark, and I think they got around three thousand and thirty-two hundred out of theirs.
Yeah. Yeah.
They're not worth much more. Hell, we, we used to get five hundred dollars.
Yeah.
Right, right. Inflation, Tom, right?
I think, I think we might make more money if we, uh, put on a county-run demolition derby.
That's what I meant, some probably aren't worth five hundred. Okay, great.
We'll do it in the Unidome.
All right. Any other, like I say, particular budgets anybody wants to look at? Or like I said, I, I had some questions on Rory's that I want to have clarified for me, but if there are other budgets, departments or items that anybody's got, I don't know, or somebody wants to review or something.
I'd like to revisit action taken Tuesday when two supervisors are missing.
Okay, and I think that was only on, please verify for, I guess, Grant and Michelle, please ver, that was only on staff requests.
Correct.
And so we're going to do that as soon as we finish off these capital, Tom, if that's all right?
Sounds good. That's fine.
Thank you. I don't know if, yeah, I was going to say, were there any that come to mind that were questionable?
The treasurer just had the renovations that will, are planned to be with ARPA.
Yeah.
The sheriff has.
Vehicles.
Pretty typical rotation of vehicles, computers, um, the bulletproof vests replacements. So nothing too exciting in there, I don't think.
No.
IT, we've talked about. Engineering is all coming out of secondary roads. Conservation has several pieces, which I have now split up between the operating budget and the capital funding request, which, um, that column I'm saying we're using fund balance for.
Fund balance, yes.
At this point.
Okay. And I think probably Rory's maybe don't, and that's just because I had some questions and he and I have talked a little bit, but I thought too, to seek the board's thoughts and opinions.
That does bring us to building maintenance, so.
Okay. Super, showtime, huh? Thank you. Appreciate it. Well, and I don't mean to go through the whole list. There was only some I had questions on, so if others have questions on particular things too, just to say, but I was, um, so clarification's really where I'm going some with this, Rory, so.
Okay.
Don't get nervous.
No, I'm not. I'm, I'm fine.
Okay, the main entry door replacement for Pinecrest.
Yes.
Six thousand dollars, I know, but. My question, I guess, in looking at that was when we are considering, and we haven't made the decision yet on what we do with, um, the public health clinic? If we do renovation there, if we look at a different facility and remodeling there or whatever, it's like, would that not be premature possibly to replace doors there when maybe an entrance or something could be something we'd want to redo?
Um, that's a good question. I, you know, I, I don't believe that this health clinic remodel will necessarily make it out to those main doors. We are experiencing issues with those doors currently. And so that's why I did put that on the list. And we did try to take a hard look at projects on whether or not, uh, potential ARPA projects would, would potentially pick that up. I do believe these would be two separate, uh, projects. The clinic is obviously looking at going back towards the, uh, the north side of the building underneath the chapel on first floor there. Just as you remember, uh, you know, some of the areas that might get impacted would be potentially the VA department's, uh, uh, area where they store, uh, goods, pantry area, that's what I'm looking for. That potentially could be an impact. It could come out just a bit into the lobby, but I really don't foresee it reaching out to the main doors to the facility. I do believe we need to get those addressed. They are constantly being worked on and they're just flat out getting wore out.
They're just not closing properly and that type of thing or locking?
It, it could be either the mechanical or the, the gears on the top side of the door, the panic bar. We've, we've had an array of issues. The door's just not quite lining up correctly. We'll make adjustments. You know, they're, uh, I'm assuming that those doors were put in back in nineteen eighty-nine during the major remodel on that building. And so you can imagine the amount of traffic that they're seeing every day. My, my suggestion would be to, uh, to, not knowing how quickly this ARPA, uh, potential project's going to turn around, I, I would really like to get going on these doors as soon as July one hits.
It's like an immediate need.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions or comments for Rory regarding that? The other was the HVAC controls update at Pinecrest.
Yeah, I had, uh.
Possibly ARPA, but I'm assuming.
Yep.
We have a strong possibility, we think it would be ARPA.
Yeah, Michelle and I had had some discussion on that particular item and we're actually looking at that potentially, um, taking that one under this year's budget. Because that is a, uh, software, a bit of hardware replacement. And in talking with the vendor, uh, because again, we did look at that ARPA project to say, okay, are we getting the cart before the horse here? Cause that's something we can, uh, group with that. But it really, it really isn't. It's a, it's an upgrade that we're starting to see some faults on the system. If we do this now, or if we do it on this budget, uh, it will roll nicely into the HVAC upgrade with the health clinic in fifth floor. It's something that needs to be done either way. Does that answer your question?
Yeah. It does. Yeah. Anybody else? Okay.
Rory, I got one question. It's really not on your list and I don't know if it should be or if it's time, but do you know, uh, we have to replace the defibrillators every so often? Do you know when they're due?
The AEDs, I know that they routinely get inspected for the, uh, on the batteries and it seems to me that those had just, uh, been replaced not that long ago. Amanda, have you got insight on that one?
Yeah, as far as the actual units, um, I have to really check, um, but we've been replacing the equipment with them, whether it's batteries, the pads. You know, I don't know that the actual unit, I'll have to check, Tom. But that was initially when we purchased those, they were about, but they were pretty expensive.
Yeah.
I mean, I think that was back when Audra was here. We had like a grant or something. But we have been maintaining them. They do their monthly inspections throughout the different departments. And we've been replacing the batteries and the equipment as they expire with, you know, with the manuals that they came with. So, but it's possible.
Rory, I thought we replaced the whole units one time already.
I don't believe so, no. The units that are in there are original. Again, we've just been maintaining them with checking on the batteries.
Okay. And we do have a current training list up on all floors?
I believe we do, yes. We are looking for volunteers to try them out on though, so.
He's volunteering?
Just kidding. Two years, okay. Did you hear that, Tom?
What's that?
Another training is coming up.
Usually December, every other year.
Every other year on Decembers?
That's good. That's very important once we have it. We need to make sure we stay up with the training and the defibs.
Yep.
You want to repeat that for Tom?
Yeah, so Dispatch, Dispatch, the folks over at the jail are the ones who actually train the people on that list.
Well, no, I just wanted to say that if, if for some, because there's been some discussion about this, you know, is it reasonable to go, if someone's in need of that, first thing is to go get the AED? Not necessarily to go look at the list of who's trained on it, right? But in a pinch, we, during that training, we talked about how Dispatch, those dispatchers are highly trained. And, you know, being able to walk someone through how to use an AED, whether they're trained on the AED or not. So we cover all that every other year in accordance with like the CPR requirements.
And then, I mean, they've gotten so foolproof, even if you're not trained.
They really are, yeah.
I mean, they're so simple. I just don't want people to be afraid of even opening the door. Well, I'm not trained on it. You don't even need training. I mean, we need to do the training. But any person can walk up. It actually talks you through it.
Right.
The machine does.
Yep.
Good to know. Hope I don't need to, but good to know. Thank you. I guess next item, I'm thinking the electrical service replacement, just because of the size for the most part?
Yeah.
And how long that would take, and if that could be done in phases, or should be done in phases, or what that requires.
Well, yeah, and there is a good deal of thought put into this project. For starters, you know, it's a very age system, you know, we're looking at almost 60 years of age. These systems can be very robust, and it's hard to determine a useful lifespan on them. Because it really goes back to how many cycles you use. And, you know, we have large pumps in our mechanical room. We have a chiller system, the boiler system, what have you, equipment throughout the building. And so you've got to imagine a lot of that getting turned on and off and on and off throughout the day. And that's what really throws wear and tear onto your main switchgear. You know, if it, if it was a switchgear that was minimally used, you can extend that life out for years and years and get useful life out of it. My concern is kind of twofold. You know, I want to continue the continuity of services through the facilities, minimize potential downtime. It is an old system, so it is difficult to find replacement parts for. But more importantly, it's personal safety. I'm looking at combining this with arc flash study. We're looking at coordination study, which a coordination study is really looking at your whole electrical distribution. And if there happens to be some kind of a short or an arc, how is that going to affect things downstream? And we have a lot of sensitive equipment here, you know, with regards to IT, the servers that they have in there. And so really, after 60 years, I think we've been very fortunate. We've had that mechanical room flood, as far as my staff says, about four times. So that means a big portion of that electrical has been underwater in the past. And so you don't know what the condition of that conduit is. Are we getting close to potentially looking at some type of an arc fault? Which would put us down for a significant amount of time. So I really believe we're at that time where we need to move forward with this project. I do think we're going to have to do it in phases. I believe we're going to be looking at switchgear first, branching out to, you know, the various floors. We have gear in our plum chases. And I think we would have to systematically come up with a plan to minimize the amount of downtime. After hours, weekends, that type of thing. But I think once we get this accomplished, we're going to have a very safe system, particularly for my staff, who spends a great deal of time in that mechanical room. That's a 1,600 amp service. That's a lot of power. And if there were, happened to be any kind of an arc flash, that is kind of the, there's no going back after that. It creates a severe damage. And so I think with those points, it really warrants itself to move forward with this project. We have been talking about it for a few years now. But to answer your question, it definitely would have to be phased in, because it is a very, very large project.
And all 675, they'll be in this year, upcoming year?
That's my goal, yeah. And this is a hefty list, as you can see. But I think this is something we would get started on right away with RFPs and get that process going. So when July 1 kicked out, we would be ready to take this out for bid and start moving on it.
And it would be completed then in '24?
That's our goal, yeah.
Because that's what I just meant, some of your items, you've got quite a few on here, and big projects. And can they be completed?
Yeah, I mean, it's a lofty list, but as you look through that list, really, I believe it's attainable. You know, not the fire alarm panel for the courthouse as well, that's a large project. We're looking at doing all the field devices, the main equipment, the panel itself. All of that has significant age on it, and it plays a critical role in this building. But, so just between that electrical project, that fire alarm project is going to take a great deal of time. But I do believe if we can get on it right away, that we can accomplish it in the physical year.
Okay.
You said that the electrical service replacement, that's a, this is phase one?
No, this was...
This would be all of it?
All phases.
Okay, okay, okay. It's making sure.
No, that's 675,000 is all inclusive for everything. We would take that and chunk it out in phases, yeah.
Yeah.
And we got, you know, we have, we have great vendors in this area, electrical contractors. So I'm confident we're going to get some nice proposals on this. So, yeah.
Okay. Well, if there are no other questions on that, that's really what I was looking at too, all the work that you were needing to accomplish on this list. It's like, it's pretty hefty.
It is. You know, you have the parking lot replacement, that's a very large project. But we have the engineering department here, who has been great to work with in the past. We did, we did a resurface over at Pinecrest. The folks within our engineering department really played a huge role in that, in keeping that project flowing. And I would expect that the same would happen here. So I think the combined forces between the two departments, it's, it would be, we'd be able to accomplish it.
This one's a rather small one, but the cafeteria remodel?
Yes.
I know you only had 10,000 in there. I'm not sure what that was for that remodel. I think we talked about the benefits of that space from networking and working together and sharing with employees made a lot of sense. But I think there is also some discussions of maybe something else could be done downstairs. And you wanted to get the space committee together and do that type of thing.
Yes.
So my question was going to be, is, are there some things that we could do to that room to make it usable? Until decisions and meetings and things like that have occurred? Or is 10,000 what you think it would take to do that?
I think the, I think the $10,000 would, my goal there was to put a new floor in there, demo the existing cafeteria equipment. Obviously, we put it out on GovDeals. We're already looking at repurposing the sink for our maintenance in the jail basement. So we're kind of scavenging equipment out of there already. But some of the larger equipment, we would definitely look at putting on GovDeals. So that, that $10,000 would allow me to go in and do some demo work, get rid of the awning, put a new floor in there, paint it. I think L R D has internet, wireless internet in that area, so we're good there. So really, that was just a number I put out there to let me get in there, get it usable. And we can always look at, you know, if we were to do that, we could look at other options down the road. And we'd just be that much further along.
Well, that's what I'm thinking, if we wanted to use that space for something completely different or some other configuration downstairs. I'd hate to make those renovations for it and...
Yeah, I don't think we'd be doing it in vain. I think that, I think that if we were to put a new floor, regardless of what we do in that area, if it's another department, let's say for an example, I think we're going to be able to utilize that for both different options. We do have a storage room. My thoughts were is if, if there was a department that it made sense to be able to put in that area, that could be a separate office. You know, we can put a new floor, paint, gut that area. And I really think, no matter what we decided to do, I don't think we'd be doing that small, that $10,000 worth of work. I think we would have to do either way. Okay?
Any other questions, comments?
No, I mean, I admire your desire to make this, to change this cafeteria room, Rory. But I just don't think the departments would use it. So.
Could be pulled off? I mean, you can still keep this in your five-year plan or something too?
Absolutely, yeah. This is, this is something that...
Well, and we could try that. That's what I guess I was kind of getting at, your point, like, could we do something to not make it a bad place to go if staff wants to? But at the same time, evaluate it before...
I could put a key fob on that door and keep it status quo the way it is. I've already, we've already got some nice tables in there. And we can, we can do some trials on a space for people to go use in the condition that it's in. It's not like it's super rough in.
No.
You know, that equipment would make me a little nervous. We'd want to gut some of that equipment out of there. Because we've got the meat slicer and things like that. We'd keep the hot dog roller, of course.
Yeah, that's right. Got to keep that, yeah, still used.
And the, and the refrigerators, obviously we'd keep those. But yeah, I, I think we can definitely, in the condition that it's in now, I would like to put the key fob on there just so we'd limit that to employees only. And we can see how it goes. And then if something else comes up and, you know, there's another department that it makes sense, then we can look at a little larger scale.
Yeah, well, I appreciate that.
Oh, just to give you an idea, so out of that 10,000, approximately 2,500 of that was going to be for the key fob system. So if that was something that you're interested in, I would propose taking that 10,000 down to 2,500 and allowing me to put the fob system on that door.
But do you need any cost for like just some of the demo stuff too? Because that would be done regardless of what happens.
We can do that.
Yeah, we would do that in the house. Obviously, you'd have some wall repair, you know, some general cleanup. There is some floor back there that is peeled up. But I think what we would do really is try to section that particular area off from the rest of the area and just try this out and see how it goes.
Should we work that from 10,000 to 2,500?
That's what I would say with, then that would allow me to at least put the key fob system in there.
And then you can have those space committee meetings and some of those things immediate, not having to wait until...
And maybe we could do a survey of employees in the courthouse about what they would want, what they would utilize in a break room if there, if there was a centralized one.
Yeah, sure.
And I can tell you, you know, being in the basement, there is a good amount of people that I, I'll seat throughout the day, just, you know, sitting in the chairs down there, just getting away from their department, you know. Sometimes you need to do that. So I would hope that people would utilize this.
Sometimes you need to get out of the courthouse. It's not always just going downstairs. Yeah, no, that's true. Well, Tom, have you got any thoughts on that as well? Looks like we're kind of in agreement to do the 2,500. Is that, how does that sound for you?
Yeah, that's fine.
Thank you. Okay, the last item that I have on here was the $500,000 for the stair railing and door upgrade at the courthouse. And that's really kind of similar to the size of the job and how it can be done, and can it be done this year, and what your thoughts are.
Yeah. Again, that, that one is going to take a bit of design work. Because along with that, I would like to look at our counter heights throughout the servicing counters. For an example, the recorders, the assessors, elections. And look at getting an ADA compliant counter height. And what I'm envisioning is not necessarily changing the whole counter, but adding a section within that counter that's lower that can accommodate the ADA needs. And along with the stair railings, right now, the reason that we've gotten by this long is until you make a change, you're essentially grandfathered in. So once you start a project and you start updating, then, then you're required to meet the most current codes. And so this 500,000 is a number that was given to us through the assessment that was done by Envision Architect. And I had mentioned earlier on that the comfort level with that amount really wasn't there. I do think, I mean, obviously, that's a significant amount of money. I think we can accomplish quite a bit. But I'm not 100% comfortable that we're going to be able to accomplish everything. I think that gives us a good start. That's going to involve some design work, so there's going to be some professional services costs there. And at this point, I can't tell you exactly what that looks like.
We don't have an idea for what those engineering costs would be, even to look at the entire courthouse, I guess, or the plan, to see where we'd be making these.
So if typically what happens is, say if you have $500,000 budgeted, you could pretty safely say that engineering or architecture would be approximately 7% to 10% of that amount. So that would, that would kind of narrow us down to what those engineering or architecture services would be. And then the remainder then would be for those actual changes.
And we're, we looking at outsourcing that, I assume, or our staff doing that?
That definitely would be an outsourcer. Because we're dealing with, on our counters, we have all this beautiful marble. And so it is going to be something that we want to try to maintain that look, but yet cut through that marble. So that is something that I would definitely want to have some real thought put into it and how that looks and...
Would it make any sense to do the engineering portion of it? To get that feel for us for going forward and knowing then, like, next year or whatever, we can start the work? When you say, if we start the work and don't finish it, that would be an issue?
Yeah, absolutely. I think that's a great idea. I think if we, if we assumed, you know, $50,000 roughly for that engineering, basing it off the 500,000, that really sets us up to be able to come to the board next budget and really have some laid out, potentially even renderings that we can show, this is what it's going to look like. I would definitely prefer that.
And would 50,000 be, you think, comfortable? I don't, I hate to...
Again, based on that 500,000, I believe that if we're just asking for that design work, we're not necessarily at that time going to be asking for them to develop an RFP. And so that shaves back some additional costs. So that 50,000 would just be, present us an idea, a picture of what this looks like. So yeah, I do think that that's achievable.
Okay. Thoughts from the board?
Yeah, I can, I can work with that.
Yeah.
Comments? Okay. Thank you, Tom. All right. Well, like I said, to be commended for sizable projects in a busy year, looking ahead. But no, that's, that was really all I just needed to...
All hands on deck.
Yeah, that's right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other capital items, or are we trying to move on to staff requesting, staff requests, I guess?
We're looking at less than, just shy of 500,000, cut. Just trying to keep my notes straight here. The cafeteria remodel is down to 2,500.
Yeah.
And the stair railing project goes down to 50,000 for 500 somewhere.
And I think we removed 40,000 from IT for the car.
Yeah, from the vehicle.
Now, I do want to say the 40,000 and the 450 were both coming out of fund balance. So you won't see a change in the tax levy.
No.
That changes the potential use of our fund balance for those two. But the 7,500 will come off the tax levy.
Right, yeah. No, that's fine. Just looking at, yeah, areas that maybe makes sense. All right. Okay. And I don't know if, do we, do we know, Carol, is Caitlin on for, no, not right now, okay? I think she mentioned, Michelle could text her or something.
I'm doing that right now. Maybe we could do another one.
Something, yeah.
Sure.
Well, did you want to, oh, what, Rory?
One quick question. The patio... The, the patio over there, you know, we had talked about doing that structure. I think the last time we had mentioned roughly 100,000. Is that, do we, do we change that? Is that included or was there more discussion that we needed to have on that?
I thought we took action including that.
I don't have that in my notes, so it is still in here. There is conversation of changing that project and adding.
And it was still.
Very large, very expensive shelter.
Well, yeah, I thought that was one of the questions maybe we had on it was, we just talked about like 15 tables or something like that. And I don't know that I've been in a shelter that's got 15 tables under a concrete pad with, with full roof. That's so close to a building. But I, I just thought, yeah, that was one thing. We talked about some of it. I don't know how much of it being an ARPA project.
Oh, that's right. You know what? That, that was ARPA.
That's why, yeah, I thought we weren't putting it in.
Sorry.
No, it's okay.
We were going to do an application.
The 9,000, so it's good to bring up. The 9,000 for the original country work is still in here if we, if you want to leave it.
We were going to increase that ARPA project.
Because if, if that 9,000 for that patio did not take into account footings or anything like that for shelters. So I would suggest that we pull that 9,000 out of this budget and focus on trying to get that out of the ARPA as one big project.
Yolanda told me the other day, you and Rory, you were working on the questionnaire.
Yolanda and I were supposed to meet up this Monday, and he had a funeral to go to. I forwarded over a couple examples of applications for the ARPA. And I'm sorry, I completely forgot that this was going to be ARPA. I was just sitting.
You wanted to stay up there and talk some more?
And Michelle was wrong. I did already.
You do? I thought.
Yes, I did. I apologize. I forgot I had done that.
Yeah, before we go on to staff requests.
That takes 1650 out of operating, correct?
I think it.
If we're pulling 9,000.
It was already out. I apologize. I didn't realize I already pulled that. So I think it's out, but I'll.
Okay.
I will triple check that before we have our hearings.
Yes.
It will be out. Put it that way. It's not out now, it will be out.
Well, and before we go to the staff requests, I had written down, too, the items that we had maybe needed to discuss more, get more, where the board supervisor's office, the capital ones, the logo, digitized, phase one, and the strategic plan. Those were, if the board wanted more, that was just me going over the list last night, thinking, do we need more discussion on that? And my question on the digitized logo was, you'd mentioned that was phase one, that we weren't talking about vehicles and that type of thing. It was just going to be logo for letterhead, use of social media.
Website.
Website, yeah, that type of thing.
Presumably, but, I mean, presumably, if, you know, in a future year, it would make sense to, to budget for full implementation so you don't have multiple brands floating around.
For sure. Any idea on cost for that?
I don't, we would have to have a full conversation there on what it, how many vehicles it needs to be replaced on, that sort of thing.
You have to remember, the sheriffs are untouchable because their logo is what they use throughout the state. The engineer, I believe, has their logo. Health department's got their own logo, so I'm not really sure what cars you're talking about.
Yeah, that's true. I mean, there might be.
Trucks, or more of the county trucks, I would think you're thinking, kind of the. Conservation has their own, too, don't they, Mike?
We do. We're actually looking.
Statewide.
Changing that, not statewide.
But looking at changing your own?
Yes.
Okay. But I knew like we do on our engineer's office vehicles.
Yeah, sheriff's same way.
Yeah.
But I think for budgeting purposes and planning purposes, if we got through this year with a, with a digitized version and then look at next year for any signage or any of that sort of stuff that we would need to update, that's got the current logo.
And I, my question to you was going to be then, can we do that with other funding other than tax askings and that type of thing, too? Or I even thought, is there anything in this year's budget? Just at, just throwing that out there. That would be in '23, that places we've looked in the board general supervision or some categories when it's 15,000 was all, maybe less, I suppose. It could be less, or is 15?
I think you'd probably be at 15. You'd want a designer to create it, and so you're going to have to put it out for RFP. So I'd be shocked if they come back less, but.
He said.
Sorry, they'd be shocked if they came out less.
Just curious. I just thought that was one we could remove, that we could do it sooner even, but I.
I can look at the board budgets. I think it's possible we could get that out of somewhere this year.
Okay. Is it if everybody's, like, agreeable or thinks that's a place to look at doing it soon?
Make sure it happens because I think it is a, part of, of updating our electronic presence. I know that it, it's just the logo itself is not, our current logo is not conducive to, to websites and that type of electronic communication. And so I just want to make sure it happens, whether it's. And if we can do it out of funds this year, then that means we can do it sooner, which is nice, too.
Maybe confirm that, I guess, if you don't think it can be. I guess we'd leave it in, but otherwise, that's a pretty minor, yeah.
I suspect it would not be a problem. I think for now, we can assume that we can reduce next year's budget by that. And I will let you know if I think that changes.
Okay, Tom, any comments or Dan?
Yeah, I have no problem. We went through the same process a few years ago. We looked at different designs and I guess we decided on the design we have. And again, I think the intent was to put that design on all Black Hawk County vehicles and everything. Obviously, you can see that in work.
Yeah. Easier said than done. Yeah, right. Okay. And the other was the strategic plan, and I think you'd budgeted. And I don't know if that's the correct amount, or are there any thoughts on that? $40,000 was what was in there for us.
Yeah, we'd have to go to RFP, presumably.
And I guess, just asking you, since I think you put it on there a little bit more about what the end goal is for the, what you're seeing or thinking. I'm not that we don't need strategic planning. I know we've talked about being strategic with ARPA money and doing that.
I wouldn't envision it being about the strictly ARPA funding or reserves. It's more about how we operate as a county. Certainly, vision and, and vision statement, recreation, modernizing, simplifying so that it's memorable and a guiding statement as opposed to having to crank our necks every time we want to look at it.
We can put that front if you want.
I'm excited to engage in this exercise.
Yeah, and I think, and I think also the idea of engaging community members through that process is important so that we make sure that the future approaches of the board match the expectations of residents. Obviously, we all have our conversations with folks throughout the community, but I think providing a platform for people to engage with where they want to see the direction of the county, I think, is, is an important and responsible way to garner input.
Okay. I just wanted to be sure that, because I thought, I know we've talked about a little strategic planning with whether it's reserves doing that, and I know that's going to be kind of, Michelle guided, obviously, ARPA probably for the most part, too. But I just thought to make sure we were all on the same page that that's where we'd be going. And obviously, I assume probably a work session come up on that, on what we want to see or what we as a board feels important to, to have involved in that when we do the RFP or how we get ready for it.
And I would think for that, it's professional services, so I'd suggest maybe more a request for qualifications or something like that rather. You may not want to just pick the cheapest, for example.
Yep.
So you, you just might want to use a different vehicle.
I think it's, I think it's a great idea. We contracted with the University of Northern Iowa the last time. And actually, we had heavy participation from the public. We held different forums throughout the county. And our last talk, I think, was over at the Art Center, and we had a pretty good-sized crowd. So the current plan we had, we went through the whole process with the University of Northern Iowa inter cog. And we also had heavy, and I mean heavy, participation with the public.
Good. And I think we just updated it in '13, and that probably wasn't, that was just more us taking a look at it and that with them and kind of, okay.
Yep.
Great. Okay, so that was all just kind of clarifying or bringing it to forefront that that was something we had. And, yeah, good. So that stays in, it sounds like. And now we're ready for staffing. And is Caitlin?
I think maybe, I'm hoping she's on. I can't see.
Oh, yep, Carol says she is. That's great. Thank you, Carol. Thank you, Caitlin.
Yep, I'm here.
Well, and I don't know if there are particular questions or areas that other board members have. When, on Tuesday, one of the questions that I had asked was, was regarding the generalist position, that full-time community health worker and how that works being done now and the need then that you were making for an additional person.
Sure, I can speak to that real quick. So, so that community health worker that we're asking for is, you're correct, it's a generalist to work on access to care and unmet social determinant of health needs. Right now, the work that is being done through our temporary communicable disease nurse that we brought onboard back in October due to our increasing communicable diseases, including tuberculosis. And so that requires really intensive, both medical but also social determinant of health for the case of the United States care coordination. So right now, the temporary communicable disease nurse is doing that work. We want to transition it to a community health worker because the tuberculosis nursing staff that we have that are permanent time employees can focus on doing the medical care coordination. And we can have a community health worker do the non-medical or, you know, social service care coordination work. And, and that would also be cost savings as well. The GS level for our community health worker is lower than that of our. Does that help?
Yeah, oh, I'm sorry, you cut out probably as much as we heard. And, and so, so how is that work being done now?
So right now, it's being done through our temporary communicable disease nurse.
Yeah. So I think what I heard Caitlin saying is that the temporary position is ending. And some of the work that's being done does not have to be done by a nurse. So I think that's why they're asking for the community health worker. That is not a nurse position, but it is a position that can help with what I think she referred to as non-medical needs for people with, in those situations. Hope I got that right, Caitlin.
That's correct, Michelle.
Well, I know it was in your presentation, and I appreciate your efforts today to try to be here and explain that, too, a little bit better. I don't know with, probably we should even bother with the halftime split when she's kind of having difficulty or we're having difficulty hearing her. That was not, that was kind of a wash from us, at least from the standpoint of funding it. We need.
I can change my audio, try to, and try something else real quick.
That's all right. I, I think, I don't know unless the board has other questions. I was going to say, I, as for me, that clinical dental hygienist was very important and critical to us going forward. I'm still kind of.
Is this better? Can you hear me better now?
Yes.
Yes, I can, thank you.
Linda, the only question I had the other day is the positions that were grant-driven.
Oh, yes, yes, that's right. So do you want to speak to that, Caitlin, as far as the, there are some of these that probably the positions you have that do involve grants, others that don't? And the question Mr. Little is ringing up, that sometimes when the grant funding runs out, sometimes the positions have remained on the payroll, I think. And, um, correct me if I'm wrong on that, but I was going to say that they don't always. The position doesn't end when the grant funding ends. People remain on the payroll. Just asking if you know, have any history of that. I realize you're in an interim position and don't have a lot of history sometimes on some of those things done previously. But when that grant position, if there are any of these grant-funded, what were the plans for these positions when the funding ends? I guess might be helpful.
Yep, so the one that is 100% grant-funded is the public health preparedness coordinator position, that halftime position that we want to share with EMA to create a full-time position. That one will be 100% grant-funded. The cost of the position for .5 is about 42,000. And we have confirmed that we'll receive 49,000 in FY '24. So it will be 100% covered. Now, the, those are, that position is going to be supported with public health emergency preparedness funds. Those funds have been around since 2003. They were created after 9/11 and are dedicated solely for public health to do emergency preparedness planning. It's a very stable grant. I don't anticipate that that grant would go away anytime soon, particularly in this post-COVID era.
So, short, your answer then, if the grant leaves, you plan on funding it with other monies?
If the grant leaves, I don't know for sure that we would transition it to other monies. We may not be able to do the activities of public health preparedness anymore. I think that would be a conversation that we'd have to have in the future. I can't say for sure what we would do if we were to lose the funds because, to be completely honest, this is such a stable grant. I don't anticipate that we would lose the funds.
Yeah, and I hope we don't. But I'd like assurance that if the grant goes away, the board is going to have to readdress this and approve it to keep it or eliminate it.
I, I would support that.
As it gets to what Mr. Trelka talked about earlier, we can't be passing things that are going to be a hardship maybe in the future to future boards. And this could be a case here of funding that wasn't funded until the grant ran out.
I would agree. The other thing that I'll add with the, with that position is because of the direction that, that nationally and at the state level that the public health emergency preparedness funds and activities are going, if we were not to move forward with this position, we would not be able to accept those funds due to the very narrow allowable activities that you're able to do with it. Basically, they are not supporting purchasing of equipment or supplies. They want to build workforce capacity in emergency preparedness. So that would be the other thing to consider. That would be an immediate consequence is that we would have, you know, that immediate workforce implication, I guess.
Yeah, and those, those things are something we'd have to address if it happened.
And, and that clinical dental hygienist, too. There is, if I'm not mistaken, there was revenue involved in that as well. So we just kind of used the 60,000 as a dollar amount, but could, like I say, so that makes that wonderful. But I just thought from a community standpoint, that was one that sounded, for me, like it made a lot of sense to do that just for our community. Lots of ideas. And I guess I'm, I'm not sure I'm supportive of that generalist position at this point in time. Doesn't mean I couldn't be in the future, but I just, for me, that's, and adding two people to the department. I know they have 60 employees currently. And we're looking at even this of additional staffing changes and adding, like, one person for the most part.
I'm on the fence with the generalist.
Yeah. Any thoughts?
Yeah, no, I, I support the generalist position because I think that it's getting at the heart of what modern public health departments are, are supposed to be in the business of, and that's addressing the social determinants of, of, of healthcare outcomes. And this is a position that I, that I think it's at, at doing that. And they've, the department has made great strides to become one of the only certified, federally certified, public health departments in the state of Iowa. And I think I see this as a continuation of, of developing that new road that the, that the last director was tasked with forcing, with forging.
Oh, I think the accreditation, like I said, yeah, all the efforts made and to take us forward, I think, have been great, so we've positioned very well.
I think if.
I think if-
And if I may add one other thing, I apologize for cutting out when I was talking about that position. So it, right now, the work that's being done is primarily linked to our tuberculosis cases. And under Iowa code, we are responsible for ensuring that individuals that we are putting into isolation or quarantine, that we provide food, clothing, shelter, some sort of means of communicating with others, those medication and medical care, we're responsible for doing that. And that's primarily the work that's being done now through the temporary communicable disease nurse. And that would be done through our community health worker position that we're requesting. So it's not that these are optional services that we're looking to meet. We are simply looking to support the staff that are doing this, given that we are seeing an increase, double the number of cases from last year to this year in our tuberculosis cases.
Who did it prior to the part-time person?
We were able to handle the work with the staff that we currently have. But with the increasing number of cases, we are not able to handle that with our current staff.
Caitlin, do you think there are possibly other alternatives rather than, as you probably know and understand better than all of us, staffing changes are the ones that impact us, I think, and probably the most difficult going forward as we put people on county payroll and then sustain these positions. So we do weigh that heavily. Are there other options for getting some assistance, I guess, for your department needs in this area rather than adding a person?
Um, well, in terms of the-
I guess my question would be, if this wasn't funded, how will you meet those needs?
I think I would continue to ask for a temporary position support to meet those needs while we're experiencing high caseloads because there isn't another entity out there that is responsible for this. It is placed on local health departments and local boards of health to be responsible for that. So that's how I would recommend proceeding would be through temporary positions to support this surge of cases.
Okay, yeah. And that was a question I had too. When you talk about an increase in cases, I thought that could mean for, in a short time, it could be, you know, a year or maybe two or something. It might not be ongoing. Not that the responsibilities couldn't shift to another need, but just because of the uncertainty of that.
How many, I mean, when you talk about an increase, what are you talking compared to years past?
Sir, so on average, between 2014 and 2001, we averaged 4.1 active TB cases per year. In 2002, we had eight cases, which we're currently still managing. We have not discharged any of those from care. And then in early February, we added a ninth active case to our workload.
Okay, you said 2002, you meant 2022?
Yes, I did. I apologize.
Okay. Linda, it sounds like we kind of maybe have a little bit of disagreement here on whether to go with this full-time or whatever. I would propose a motion to eliminate the full-time position and for one year fund the part-time to see where the cases go, or the temporary one.
I'll second that.
Comments? There's, oh, I guess a motion on the floor and a second then. So any more discussion, comments?
Michelle probably wants a number.
Caitlin?
Yes.
Can you help us, if you were continuing to do that on a temporary basis, what would an amount be, do you think?
Um, well, right now, we have it as a temporary communicable disease nurse. And I think step one in FY '23 was around $25 an hour. I'm not sure what that estimate would be for '24, to be honest. I would have to double check.
All right. Caitlin and I will meet at Kate Mac with you if that's what you choose to do.
I do have an interesting question for Caitlin, even though there's a motion. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay. Caitlin, if this position were filled as a full-time and caseloads went down, I understand that you sort of have rolled over eight, so I don't know if that number is decreasing. But just for the sake of argument, what type of work would this position do if that caseload were to decrease?
Sure. So I, you know, I really do hope that we see our cases go down, to be completely honest, because that is a reflection on the overall health of our community. Unfortunately, we're seeing other communicable diseases increase as well, that this position could work on supporting access to care and social determinants of health related to those. For example, our syphilis cases are dramatically increasing. We doubled our rate of syphilis from 2018 to 2020. That's kind of the most recent data that I have. We're seeing our gonorrhea and chlamydia cases increase as well. So there's certainly an abundance of work to do in terms of the number of patients that we're seeing that we are trying to work on just in the communicable disease program. I mean, there are certainly other access to care and unmet social determinants of health needs that we see across our other programs as well, in chronic disease and community health, et cetera.
Thank you.
Caitlin, I don't know if you have available time. Now you come in much louder and clearer. I was going to say, as far as before we move on, well, no, should I just move on? I was going to say, we'll address the halftime thing another time. We're all right with that. Since it netted out, that was good. So there's been a motion on the floor and a second to remove the full-time community health worker generalist position and substitute for that a temporary employee that would help and assist in that same area. Is that a good enough motion?
For one, for one year with future board approval?
Yes.
To extend?
Yes, yeah, for a one-year period, yes. Could be revisited, I guess, at 24 or 25 budget. Sure. Thank you. All right. Please answer as your name is called.
Hall.
Because I believe that the communicable diseases is something that we've got to address systemically. And I believe that the full-time position is warranted. I'm going to vote no on this.
Little?
Yes.
Schwartz?
I'm going to vote no because I believe in the full-time position.
Treoka?
Yes.
Layland?
Yes.
Thank you. Now, Tom, you mentioned as far as you had a comment or wanted to say something. I think it is in regard to the positions we maybe voted on yesterday. And you certainly are able to comment, but I wondered if we shouldn't just redo the votes on, for the most part, on what we, for all the positions and because-
That's what, yeah, Linda, that's what I was requesting. If there wants to be any discussion, that's fine. I did go through some of the information after I left. I received it. So if somebody wants to discuss it further, but other than that, I want to have a revote.
Okay. Well, and I thought it was a little confusing. We knew at times, I think, when we, some of us didn't know at what time who dropped off. And so sometimes maybe we continued and somebody had dropped off. I think we found out later. So that seems to be a good way to do it, I think, and not have to see which ones Dan was here and which ones Tom was here and just revisit them all or not.
All of them. And I apologize. I think everybody knows I work once a week for Hy-Vee Security. And I had TASER certification and defensive tactics. And I was called to certify with my TASER.
Duty-
Right when these discussions started.
Yeah.
So- Also, the conservation position was approved with three of-
Well, that's what, I wasn't sure if who was online, so I thought, but we'd revisit it. I meant just to make sure if that was an issue. Were you on and do you recall voting on the conservation?
I did not. I did not vote on any of these.
Okay, all right. So that's why I thought we'd go ahead and do that. Do we need a motion to do that? Or is everyone all right to just go through all of them? I mean, what would feel best for you? Because we can certainly make a motion to revisit it all if we need to and take action.
I think to have a vote, we're going to have to, somebody's going to have to make a motion one way or the other.
Okay, just to do it that way? All right.
On each, on each position that was discussed.
Grant, I'm looking at you. What's the-
If you went by Robert's Rules, you would have a motion to reconsider. The motion would be made. If you considered this a continuation of that meeting, then a motion would need to be made by somebody who voted on the prevailing side in the original motion.
Yes, if you use Robert's Rules. But we only use Robert's Rules as a guide. We do not adopt Robert's Rules. So I just, and that certainly could change the person that brings it up. But I just think in all fairness, for that we revisit it and we revisit each one.
Also, also being an absent supervisor, I have the right to bring it back, even at a board meeting. We're currently under budget, which is, it's not, anything is not in concrete until we actually have the budget certification and hold a vote. So right now, basically, everything's wide open. So I do have a right as a county supervisor to bring it back for a vote.
Do these need to be, if, just in the interest of moving things along, do these need to be motions to reconsider per position or department? Or can we just do it from one fell swoop, a motion to reconsider?
That's what I'm saying. We, I suggest we just do a motion to reconsider all-
All the positions?
And that way, we allow everyone to comment then on each of the positions, whether they were voted on or not. Thoughts?
You don't have to look at me, Tavis. I'm only telling you what you find in a book. If the board wants to make its own rules and you're all lied by them, then that's fine.
In the interest of moving this along, I'll make the motion to reconsider all of the positions that were approved on Tuesday.
And I think, Tom, whether this is your motion and Tavis seconding or you, whichever it sounds like to me.
Could you name the, I mean, I'm not really sure what positions we're voting on. Would you just say, oh, what are the positions?
Well, that's-
I did have a, I did have a concern with one of them.
It would make sense to do them individually. There were three motions. And if you had a motion to reconsider each one individually, that would probably make it cleaner.
Okay. So I will, at this time, I will make a motion to reconsider the county attorney portion of staffing requests.
Okay. I'll tell you what the motion was at the last meeting.
Is that acceptable, Tom?
Sure.
Okay. Good. Dan?
Yeah.
Okay. Super. Thank you.
The motion that I took from the last meeting was to request, to approve the request by the county attorney to add one full-time victim witness coordinator and to remove a halftime investigator, a halftime discovery compliance officer. And it had numbers in there that were provided by Michelle.
Yes.
Grant, does it show that I was here for that vote? I think I was.
No, this was the second vote. Actually, the first one was conservation. You were here for that one. And you voted no.
Okay. Okay.
And the net cost on that, there was actually not a position added, even though it looked like one. It was like the net cost of making those changes was the $11,255.
Correct.
Yep, correct.
All right. So is there a motion?
I'll make that motion on the county attorney's request.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded. Please answer as your name is called.
Is this a motion to approve the position or to?
Yes.
Okay.
This is to approve the position, not to rescind the vote from Tuesday.
If you want-
I'm just kidding.
I don't know that we voted, I don't know that we voted on that motion to reconsider.
If you're going to have a motion to reconsider, you should vote on that first and then vote on the motion.
So we're going to reconsider first, vote on that. And so-
I will, Tom, was that you?
Okay.
You were the one that made the motion.
Your motion to reconsider. Tavis moves to reconsider as a member of the prevailing group. I know you say you don't need to do it that way, but if he's offering to do it that way, it makes it a lot cleaner.
It sure does.
That's, I'll second that.
Okay.
All right. Do we need a resolution or just all in favor, aye?
You can do it either way. We need to record the vote of every, everybody's vote. But if everybody votes aye, it'll show that way in a minute.
Oh, that's, we'll just do a roll call vote. Please answer as your name is called.
Okay.
Thank you.
Little?
Yes.
Treoka?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Layland?
Yes. Now, we'll move on to the vote. And yet there was a motion and a second already for approving the attorney's restructuring plan.
So moved.
Yes.
Please answer as your name is, yes. It was. Okay. You got the individuals?
Little, sorry?
Yep.
Yes.
Tom and Dan.
Yeah, there's a question in my mind whether you need to remove the motion or if it's already moved, if you're just reconsidering the motion that was already moved. But we'll fork that out. We'll just vote. Little?
Yes.
Treoka?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Layland?
Yes.
Well, I don't know if we need to do any orders. Do we want to move on to human resources restructuring? We didn't do that at all. But do we want to just stay with the ones we voted on yesterday first?
Sure.
Would that be the cleaner? Okay. And we said conservation was one we said you did not vote on.
I did not vote on.
So-
I will make the motion to rescind the action taken on Tuesday concerning conservation department staffing.
I'll second it.
If you want to, if you want to reread the motion as you did.
Is this a motion to reconsider?
Yes.
Okay. It was to approve the request by conservation for one full-time naturalist, $78,123, and to increase seasonal pay, $11,434.
So moved.
Second.
For the rescind.
For the rescind.
Okay. This is a motion to rescind. Please answer as your name is called.
Reconsider.
What?
To reconsider.
To reconsider, okay.
Little?
Yes.
Treoka?
Yes.
Schwartz?
I'm going to vote no. I understand the concern over when the meeting moved to three supervisors, but we did have four still voting on that one, so I'm voting no.
Hall?
Yes.
And Layland?
Yes.
So now we move on to consideration of full-time naturalists, the increase in seasonal pay and the total of $89,557.
I'm going to make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Second.
And moved and seconded. Please answer as your name is called.
Treoka?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Layland?
Yes. Thank you. Now, was there one other department that was made or was there more?
Yes.
Okay. Board of Supervisors would be the marketing position, otherwise the others we hadn't considered. All right.
Mr. Reader, could you reread that motion?
The motion was to approve the full-time marketing coordinator at full cost of $106,528 in the board supervisor's office.
I'll make a motion to reconsider.
I'll second.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. Please answer to reconsider or to rescind and reconsider. Please answer as your name is called.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Treoka?
Yes.
Layland?
Yes. Now, moving on to adding a full-time marketing coordinator.
I did, yesterday I did a lot more homework on this. I support the position. I like the position. The feedback I got from staff was, let's get the strategic plan done first. So I'm going to make a motion that we fund $53,264 for this position with the position to begin January 1st. And also, we have our administrative aide in the board supervisor's office. I'm not saying combine these positions, but we got, we've got some exploring to do. So I want to get the strategic plan done. And then I'd like to add this position beginning January 1st.
I'll second that.
Okay, I was going to, okay, it's been moved and seconded and time for discussion?
Yeah, absolutely.
No, go ahead.
Yeah, no, I think this is a, I'd be comfortable moving forward in July. But I think this is a good, a good compromise. I like compromise. And I do, I think there's, it does make sense to get the strategic plan maybe going and then we know how this person will plug in.
Yeah, I think it, I think it makes sense. I'm comfortable with it. I appreciate the compromise.
I appreciate the compromise. I'm, I, yes, as far as I, I'm kind of concerned, I was a little bit, as far as, you know, the housing, the staff person and them being responsible to the board and how that was going to work or how we move going forward on that and dependent on the strategic plan. What if we desire, we would like a different position? You know, and I did do the same as Dan, probably a little more homework after you brought this up and the staff spoke to this at meetings- this up and the staff spoke to this and meeting some assistants and, and some others that I did talk with. And it seemed like there was a, a need, I think, or a desire for some real help as soon as possible from a social media presence and getting some of that information out there. And not that their staff is prepared to do that and spend the time on it, but if we could do something, you know, in the immediate time that could help start that and then kind of dig into where, where our needs are, where the county should be looking at, what else we should be doing and if we should be doing marketing or communications or what that would be. So that was some of my questions for you. I just thought to, that would address that. Are you? I guess the, the fact that it's a full-time position put, and then we're agreeing to that without more that ironed out yet, even to do it in January, I'm not sure. That's kind of where I'm falling a little bit on this.
I don't think that, you know, strategic communications is inherently tied to a strategic plan. I think, I think getting our communication strategy, not just aligning with immediate needs, but our long-term needs as an ongoing operation. So I don't know that it's just as quick as a, a quick assessment of, of where we're currently at, setting a communications calendar and moving forward. The need for this is ongoing. This is a long-term need of the county. Other counties across the state have utilized this position to benefit communicating the service of the quality services that county governments offer to residents. We need folks that can articulate what it is, the good work that our folks do. And so I do think it's an, it's an ongoing need. So half of it this year, starting January 1. And there, we're gonna continue to do good work and we should continue to tell folks about it.
Okay, Dan, can I clarify? Is the motion the, just for the amount, 53, 624, was that it?
264. 53, 264.
And position to start January 1st?
Yes.
And did you want anything else in the motion or is that it?
Are you, I think you're-
Well, you know, you, we can put discussion in, but as far as, as what the motion goes, I just want to make sure that we get everything that you want in there.
Yes, I believe I have everything I want in there to make this happen. You feel like I'm missing anything?
No.
Okay.
Just making sure if it was required, something else that was needed or necessary.
Right. You, you were giving justification for it and I didn't know if you wanted any of the justification in the motion.
Oh, I see. Okay. No, we can, we'll iron those out. I mean, I've had great conversations with HR and Michelle and we have time.
Any other questions, discussion?
Was there a second to the motion?
Yes, sir, I seconded.
Ready? The second then, all right. Okay, just double checking. Okay. Please answer as your name is called if there's no further discussion.
Hall?
Yes.
Little?
No.
Jelka?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Layland?
This one's tough. I want to do definitely, as you know, what's right for the county and improve, like I said, and the assistance. I just, I know how hard our staff works to find positions and make, before we make those decisions on some of these.
I'm sorry, what was your vote?
It isn't yet.
Oh.
I'm sorry.
Maybe I just missed it.
No. I am. And we'll revisit it, no doubt, going forward anyway. So, okay. And I appreciate the compromise from everybody, but all right, I'll do a yes on this one. Thank you, everyone.
No, thank you, everyone.
All right. So we've, we've done all the reconsiderations that we need from Tuesday. Is that correct, Grant?
Yes.
All right. So I will make a motion to approve, going back to the staffing sheet. This is, I think, pretty minimal, but the approval, I make a motion to approve the request from Information Technologies for the .5 network specialist.
I'll second it.
Well, that was just, we're just trying, that's the one that's-
It's just a transfer.
It's a transfer of nothing. It doesn't affect anything.
It's a net zero.
Yeah. And that's just on a one-year basis, right? It was like we were kind of looking at exploring that and what it was gonna do or would not do. And, yeah, thank you.
When we met with the health department and the employee and IT, so right now we're, again, kind of looking at this similar to what was done with the GIS asset technician and engineer that started out an engineer and then kind of went part-time to conservation. And I would even say that's still a little bit fluid, just determining, you know, where that best fits. So this is similar. We're gonna take this year to really understand if this is a good fit as a split position or if it just makes full sense to eventually completely be housed under IT but support really the health department and all of their, you know, private, well, HIPAA needs, electronic health records needs, as well as just the software updates and things like that. So that's the plan with this right now.
So we revisit it in a year and, and see that that's, that's worked?
I think next year-
Do we need to change it?
I would say next year at budget time, it would either stay status quo, it could possibly go back to the health department, or it could fully be funded under IT. And then that would be for you guys, you know, to monitor. If it's a net zero, it could still be a net zero. It'd just fall under IT, nothing be added additionally to health. Or vice versa, go back to health, but nothing be added additional for IT. But that would be it this time next year.
Okay. Now, my concern, I think when I said this earlier, was just the fact that what Toki's doing now in the health department, how are we gonna meet those needs or whatever? So it wasn't like-
Right.
Just somebody else has to do it.
And they did build in that capacity. Micah Knabel is the compliance specialist who does, that was built in there to support the need that, of Toki's position. So they do have some of that. It's not like nobody is, is covering that area. It's just, you know, and if we get through this point and, you know, or get through this the next, starting July 1, and we have six months to evaluate this, and it's like, yeah, this is still, Toki's time is 75% still in health department, doing what she was doing, and 25% is really only IT, then we'll have to kind of come back and, and see if this is really good fit or not.
Sure. Okay. Thanks, appreciate that.
Do we already, sorry, go ahead.
I'm sorry. I just am offering to provide additional information if you want, Supervisor Layland. I know you had a question for me. And if Amanda didn't answer your question, I'm still available to talk about our remaining positions.
No. I, I don't think so. I think, I think we're fine with everything, Caitlin, so thank you. Unless somebody speak now. Okay. No, we're fine.
We're good.
Thank you. Okay. So, human resources is, oh, I'm sorry. Do we-
We got a motion.
Oh, on the halftime, yeah. Sorry.
Just a rubber.
It's a formal, we might as well. That's okay. All right. Please answer as your name is called.
Hall?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Jelka?
Yes.
Layland?
Yes.
Human resources, I'm gonna make a recommendation to approve the presented positions, readjustments.
Second. Second.
Intern and two but position, or the add full-time, just, yeah, restructuring for the most part, but with the intern added?
Yes.
And I have a little update on that intern if you guys would like, 'cause last time I came here, you know, was just in the first kind of exploring as to what that would look like. So I have a little bit more of a plan if you guys would like to hear that.
Yeah.
So I've been meeting with our, one of our board of health members, Desa Cornish, who works for, she's a professor with the University of Northern Iowa. And what we have, in our conversations with her about employee wellness, and that's an area that she focuses on with teaching UNI students, that's an area that I think, since I've been here in HR and in the board office, as well as other staff members have identified employee wellness is an, an area that we could focus a bit more on. And so we're looking at, right now, beginning for next fiscal year, having an opportunity to survey staff, survey departments to kind of get a feel as to what employees are looking for when you talk about wellness and, or well-being and how recognizing that the workplace and the employer has an influential role in employee wellness, outside of just health benefits like coverage and, and things that you kind of think of your standard package. So an intern then would not start until January, would be for the spring semester. And that would have, from, from July or from now, really could start this planning now until then, have a bit better grasp as to what the intern could focus on when it comes to connecting us with resources and programs. Possibly it could be materials, connecting with partners out in the community to host women's health seminars, men's health seminars, areas in different aspects of our lives that, whether it's with families or, you know, or mental well-being, brain health is often what we see now as that's being termed. So, so those are kind of where we're, where I'm focusing on, less on the recruiting and social media side, especially with the approval of the, of this position for the marketing. But that's where I'd like to see this focus for the intern.
And you mentioned, I think, in the last couple of days too, kind of more of a project-driven
thing for the interns, not someone you've got to-
Yep. Initially, I was kind of exploring, you know, potentially would we need another FTE? But I don't, I want this to be worth their time. And I think that project, kind of looking at more what they're learning in the classroom to really apply that can benefit the organization, as opposed to being here and, you know, filling out I9s and, and, you know, doing payroll processing, things like that, or pre-employment testing. So not that that's not of value, but I think this would be a better fit in just, in talking with Desa.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thanks.
I have a question on the generalist. Didn't we a few years ago have the two individuals classified as generals?
So there was a time here where we had two generalists. They were just two HR generalist positions. So yes, that classification has existed before. The senior generalist that I, or, or generalist two that I'm proposing is new. It's below an HR manager, which is a classification we've had in the past as well. So it's kind of an in-between generalist and a, and an HR manager. I think with us having three of us in there, this just seems like a, a natural fit after I've had a, a long time to kind of be in the current structure that we've had, both at the specialist level and recruiting and composition, then at the director level, and then looking at past classifications. But yes, Tom, we've had the generalist before, but not the senior generalist.
What's the total cost of increase then for wages?
Well, the total for, for just those, or, okay.
For those two positions that you're gonna create?
I want to say it's about $20,000.
I think that net cost for the restructuring and the intern, you had $43,803.
Yep. So you see that intern's about $18,000, so it's maybe a little bit more than 20-
$25,376.
And that's all, that's with your FICA, your IFRS.
Right. All payroll.
So just wages would be a little bit less than that.
Yes.
Absolutely. Yeah.
Did you, did you hear, Tom, or was it, I wasn't sure.
Yeah. No. No, I get, yeah, that's fine.
Michelle was talking too, so I just wanted to make sure you heard. Okay. Any other questions or comments? There's been a motion and a second for the human resources restructuring. Please answer as your name is called.
Little?
Yes.
Schwartz?